Mayor Magrilli.
Yes.
Mayor Potemore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman Good.
Here.
Councilwoman Musing.
Here.
Councilwoman Shishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you for that. We have two items today, so let's start with item 3A, please.
Mayor, Council, John Heine, Community Outreach Manager, here to speak with you. Looks like we have a little bit of feedback there. So, here to speak with you today about a proposed amendment to an agreement with Prescott Media Center. The Prescott Community Access Channel, otherwise known as Prescott Media Center, will give a presentation today to talk about their plan to dissolve formally as a 501(c)(3) organization. And they will also talk about their desire to turn over their assets, mostly equipment, to the City of Prescott, and also seeking City of Prescott's management of any of the public access activities such as public meetings and broadcast of those things. So, I do have a few members from the Board here that would like to present. I have Don Swetlik, who's the Board Chair, and John Krezek, who is a Board Member as well, so they're welcome to come up and share their comments.
Good afternoon. Come on. Yep. Thanks you very much for allowing us to speak with you today about the upcoming proposed dissolution of Prescott Community Access Channel, as John said, also doing business as Prescott Media Center. To start with, I'd like to say something about the process and why we're dissolving. For, our contract with the city formally ends in April of 2021. That was an extension of the previous five-year agreement that expired two years ago, almost two years ago. And for at least the last three years, we have cut money month after month as an operation. And within the last year, we have cut costs dramatically and so aggressively that I'm quite confident there's no more cost-cutting that would make any sense whatsoever. By April of 2021, when our current contract with you ends, we would most likely be bankrupt. And if we weren't bankrupt, we'd be hanging on by a thread and have a month or two left. So, it's important to note that our losses, we broadcast two things for you right now, not for you, to the city right now. Channel 58, which is the city tourism channel, and Channel 64, which is public access. And it's important for you as the Council to know, we're not losing money because of our activities with Channel 58, the city tourism channel. That's relatively low maintenance and easy to continue on with. Channel 64, the public access portion of our business, is what's really expensive with continually programmed changes and the upkeep of that channel and the expenses associated with it, along with the related expenses of insurance and a variety of other things that just require us if we're in business. Since we knew that the business was ultimately not sustainable, we thought it was, in the best interest of everyone, that we move forward with approaching you as soon as possible with our situation and our plan versus in March or so of next year saying, "We can't continue." So, our plan is to exit as gracefully as possible with all of our debts paid and all of our legal obligations taken care of, and providing the city with state-of-the-art broadcasting equipment, if you choose, which I hope you will, to continue broadcasting events such as this and the city tourism channel. Again, the city tourism channel and this aspect of our business is really not what's leading to our demise. It's the lack of interest in public access portion of our business, what was Channel 64. We currently have two servers in our operations. We used to have three. One of those, the third one, failed, and our manufacturer, the manufacturer of that server told us that server and none of our other existing two servers, which are over 10 years old, are repairable. When they die, they die. And when the existing two servers, either one of them dies, that would require a brand-new server to be purchased. Remember, I said we want to turn over the operation to the city with state-of-the-art equipment. That's why we're proactively approaching you with our plan of dissolution while we still have money in the bank. Our plan is immediately upon the city signing the resolution in front of you today, which agrees to take over our assets, our physical assets, after we dissolve our organization, immediately upon you signing the resolution, we intend to, as PCAC, purchase a brand-new, very good, state-of-the-art, modern server for your use after our dissolution. So, we would purchase it, and it would go to the city as part of our assets being turned over when we legally dissolve in the next few months, hopefully as soon as, or as soon as March, excuse me, as soon as November of this year, but no later than April of next year. So, briefly, how did we get to this point? PCAC started, for those new, in 1986, as the organization that ran community access for the City of Prescott. And public access is that entity that allowed citizens in the late '70s, early '80s, '90s, and still today, to provide programming for broadcast on local TV stations, where they came up with, or they presented their thoughts or their programs to the general public in the immediate area. But public access became less and less relevant as time went on. Along came the Internet, Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, and worst of all, the iPhone with its excellent video camera capability. Today, when someone wants to broadcast something, they take their iPhone, they make a video of it, load it up to the Internet, and all of a sudden, they have worldwide distribution instead of local distribution. In 2015, when we were still what was known as Cable Access 13 on Cable 1, Channel 13, we had over 50 members, all of which, no, almost all of which aggressively and consistently provided us with programming for our channel. Today, in 2020, we have 15 members, virtually none of which provide any programming for us. Public access just purely isn't what it used to be, and it's really, actually, unfortunately, or fortunately, no longer relevant. However, broadcasting, government programming such as this meeting remains highly relevant, in my mind anyway, and hopefully in yours. And certainly, the city tourism channel and meetings such as this should continue. That's why our process is to back away from the public access portion, discontinue that, provide you with a brand-new server so that you can continue to broadcast on local channel, what will be 64, the government access channel, in the future, and continue to do with these meetings. So, and one more thing, I'll restate it. You will be having very, very good state-of-the-art broadcasting equipment from a very highly reputable cable broadcasting manufacturer. You will have a first-class operation when we exit and you take over, if you choose to take over. So, with that background in mind, I will quickly go over the resolution in front of you, if you'd like, and you can interrupt me at any time during that and provide questions, if you have any questions, either now or as I step through the process. Any questions right now? Otherwise, I'll go in.
Yeah. Thanks for being here today and this generous offer. Are there services you all provide in the community that we need to be aware of, you know, like a charity event or anything that you've done in the past, that, you know, we need to understand any obligations that, you know, you've had historically, and maybe we need to be aware of those things and try to figure out how that's going to be taken care of?
Okay. We have no contractual obligations with any organization in the city. We've done things for the Boys and Girls Club under specific one-time arrangements. Historically, however, we have broadcast the Kiwanis auction, weekly, or actually two-week auctions, on our Channel 64. That, we don't have a contract with doing that, for doing that. We have a history of doing that. There's no legal obligation, per se, for us to continue or for anyone to continue with it. I'm not saying it's not a worthwhile situation, but we have no contracts with anyone to continue on with anything in particular. Okay. Thank you. And, members, Kiwanis is here today if you need to, would like to speak to them after my presentation. Okay, okay. Would you, oh, sorry, no, no. No, go ahead. Would you like me to go through the resolution, or have you read the resolution? I can go through it and just give you thumbnails.
Just for clarification, it's an amendment to an existing contract, so what you'll be looking at is the Second Amendment proposed. So, we're throwing the kind of term "resolution" around, kind of conflating that with what you're actually looking at.
Right.
Just so you know what you're looking at. It starts on page, looks like page 12 of the Council Packet, a Second Amendment to the PCAC.
Right. We have that in our Packet, right?
Yes. And I can quickly go through it.
If you'd like to, that's fine. I think we have it here, but if you'd like to, that's fine.
Okay. I'll take it step-by-step and very fast. Number one, we've notified our two employees of our dissolution, and during the wind-up period, we're going to retain one full-time employee. We have terminated our part-time employee. This says by September 1, that's assuming the resolution or the amendment, whatever, gets signed. By September 1, we will place an order for the new server and its related equipment, so it can be on order from the manufacturer. At this point in time, we don't know if that's a "we'll ship it tomorrow" situation, or "we'll ship it in 90 days" situation. We're thinking it's more like a couple of weeks, we're guessing. Beginning September 15, all of this again is dependent upon you, not you, the city, accepting the amendment. On September 15, we will start to phase out the Tourism Channel 58, and we will begin to convert that over to Channel 64, which is currently the public access channel. The public access channel will go, all public access will end September 1. All programming will end September 1, except these live city meetings, they will continue to be broadcast on 64. When the Tourism Channel moves over to, from 58 completely to 64 on October 1, then it'll be Tourism Channel with interruptions to, for live city meetings. On November 30, we will terminate our full-time employee, and on that date, the city would take over total operation of the station. If we're not dissolved by November 30, the city would use our assets, PCAC assets, until our formal dissolution, at which time, they would all become your assets. So, you would never go dark. And on September 4, to help us in the dissolution and the purchase of the new equipment, you would, the city would, provide us with the remaining balance of what, if your monthly payment to us for operating the station would be from August through November, that being $29,000. Then on October 1, as I said, the Channel 58, your current government channel, Tourism Channel, would go completely dark. There would only be one station on Cable 1, that would be 64, which would now be your Tourism Channel and live government meetings, and anything else you choose to run on that channel. And finally, as I said, upon our dissolution, all our assets, including the new server, all of our physical assets, including the new server, will be turned over to the city as part of our legal proceedings. A point to note, I keep saying all our physical assets, any remaining cash assets that we have upon our dissolution will be distributed to existing 501(c)(3) organizations in, within the city limits of Prescott. Okay, that's basically it.
Okay. Questions, comments from the Council? Councilwoman Blair?
I'm confused, but that's not unusual. This has gone, this has gone full circle in 20 years since I've been here, from a volunteer organization where we fought hard to get two channels, and now we're trying to wean it down to one channel, which I'm totally against. We used to have a communications division. Mr. City Manager, I guess my question would be, are we going to hire employees to have a new communication division? We had one. We had four employees at one time in the downturn of the economy in 2006 and '07.
Councilwoman Blair?
Yeah, well, let's talk a little bit about this. I think it was alluded to a little bit by the presenters. You know, the nature of cable television and the cable industry has changed dramatically in 20 years. Also, the ability to do video has changed dramatically. Our contribution to the center is $92,000 a year, plus or minus. So, with absorbing or potentially absorbing this function, we'll have to make decisions about whether or not we're going to hire people, or we're going to contract out for services to provide the services that they've provided.
Okay.
And it might be some combination thereof, because with $92,000, you obviously have the ability to absorb some in-house city staff, if that's the desire, or the direction we decide to go, or look at the privatization and contracting out because of the decentralization, the decentralized nature of providing video content in this day and age.
I appreciate, I really appreciate all the things you folks have done over the years, and it's been hard, a lot of times, with people standing there just like you, basically begging for money to keep it afloat, up in the armory in a shell. And so, it's come a long ways, and I just hate the fact, because I think our Tourism Channel does a great community good, and I think our airing of all of our community events could be more than what they are today. And I'm just wondering how hard it is to retain that other channel and not do away with one. I think that is not good hindsight, or good foresight.
You guys answered that one.
Yeah, I mean, it's very simple. So, actually, the city, believe it or not, has three channels through Sparklight. 65 is dark right now, but it's technically under city control, City of Prescott control. That was the Veterans Channel for a year or two. 58, what Don's trying to say is that the content that they're doing, the public access content, outside shows, syndicated shows, news content, those things, that's the cost part of it that will go away. So, then in essence, we have enough content that's city-generated on the Tourism Channel. We have enough content for one channel. So, we in essence would have two channels with only content for one. So, I talked to Sparklight, and our option is to, we don't have to give up rights to those channels. We can keep them online, but if we have 58 go dark, move the tourism content to 64. We could always re-initiate 58 or 65, if there's content and desire to do so. So, we're not shutting the door on that. We're just temporarily moving it over.
Okay. I mean, I know it's a time of transition, but I think the tourism part is so very valuable, and maybe you're right, maybe there's just not enough contact with planning, or content for planning and zoning, and the Council meeting twice a month to interrupt too much stuff, so, but I want to make sure that we're not just giving it up for giving it up.
Sure. And I think the opportunity, and we talked about this internally a lot, is the opportunity to bring it in-house, so to speak, and you mentioned that there was a whole communications division. I think that we have the opportunity, the city communications, whoever we hire, whether it's an employer or contractor, to imagine a whole new set of programming, you know, tourism, social media, you know, video. There's so much more rich content that we can be doing.
Right.
So, I think it actually is an opportunity in some ways for us.
I think it's a great opportunity to just be, it's all on how it's put together and packaged, so I just don't want to lose.
Makes sense.
Any of what we have.
And John alluded to, you know, in this day and age, there's so many different ways to reach people in different mediums. By taking it in-house and privatizing or contracting out, we can have people provide content through other mediums that's specific for Facebook or social media and the like.
I suppose, I guess my biggest point is the fact that when we have tourism and hotels, and they have that channel on, which I do quite often when I'm gone somewhere, and you are able to see what's available out there without going anywhere else, it's absolutely a service to be able to come to a hotel in Prescott and see some of the great videos we've put together, so people know what's out there.
Sure. And that opportunity will exist and continue to exist, and like I say, I think it's a chance to really reimagine some of the city's programming as well.
Councilwoman Shishka?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege of being the council liaison for these guys for quite a few years. And I tell you what, they have really had a hard row to hoe. The business model for PCAC, Community Access Channels, has consistently degraded. And kind of the first nail in the coffin was when Prescott Valley pulled out. They could have had some modicum of success if, in fact, they could have had both cities, but Prescott Valley is doing its own production. And we tried a lot of things. Tried a military channel, and unfortunately, it couldn't be broadcast at the VA. So, that was not a great deal. They've tried a lot of things. I know that John's going to talk about, I'm sure, the production that they've done. And, you know, Don, I have to say that you really came in, and this is your bread and butter. You like saving organizations, but I'm really sorry that you couldn't save this one. I think that what really has happened is that on the Internet, you can get HD. Where they've got us now, on 64 and 65, or in 58 and 64, it's not HD. And anymore people demand that when they watch television. We used to be on Channel 13. And when we were on Channel 13, that was, let's say, in the sweet spot of all the, you know, national channels. So, people would watch it a lot more than having to search for it on Channel 64. So, I have to say that you gentlemen have done a hell of a job trying to keep this thing afloat. We really appreciate you, and I think that it's time to move on.
Other questions, comments from the Council? All right. John?
Mr. Mayor, so before you go to public comment, I think we have at least one, but just today, this was not in your Packet, because we just did receive communication today from the Kiwanis Club, and the president of the Kiwanis Club is here with an email, which I think I'll submit it for the record. I don't think it bears reading since she's here. But Tammy Pyatt would like to have an ongoing conversation with the city about the auction and how that interrelates to, you know, to this new amendment, to the agreement. So, one of the things to note with this, and one of the things that Kiwanis brought up is that actually some of the equipment that Don talks about turning over to us, there actually is a shared, there's a shared use. The Kiwanis actually owns part of that equipment. So, the amendment that you have in front of you for voting later may need to be somewhat updated to address the fact that what we're asking is for, you know, Kiwanis and PMC to sort out the equipment, and so that we know what we're getting, what's ours, what's Kiwanis. Does that make sense?
John, are you suggesting that maybe we might want to pull that from consent and table it until that can be figured out?
I think that we could probably have something back to you for the next meeting, so that we kind of keep the timeline as close as possible, but I think that probably makes the most sense at this point. Matt and I talked about it as well.
Yeah, I think tabling it, pulling it, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, if some of these assets are shared with Kiwanis.
Something here that we can't overcome, I don't think.
And Mayor, I would strongly suggest, and I'm sure John, he and I have talked about this, we try to find a way to help Kiwanis continue to.
Sure.
Host their auction and find the medium whereby that happens, so.
Yeah, it's a staple in our community. They do great work, and we don't want to pull out the rug from Kiwanis. So, it sounds like you need a little more time to study that, though, John, to figure out.
Yeah, I think we might want to add some more provisions to the amendment, but I think if, when you open it up to public comment, I think Tammy might have something to say.
Yeah, yeah, let's go to public comment.
We have nothing online for Zoom, Mayor.
Okay.
Tammy? Thank you so much. And I really don't have a whole lot to say that has not already been said. Once John shares the email with you as he's going to, it's pretty much forthcoming. And like I told him, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time. I like short meetings myself. But, but thank you very much to our city for continuing the relationship with the Kiwanis Club of Prescott. We do want it to be mutually beneficial, and we do look forward to whatever this looks like, to us partnering and just helping out our community in any way we can. But we certainly, our auction, of course, as most of you know, is the fundraiser for the Kiwanis Club of Prescott. We raised minimally $175,000 over the last several years. That has gone right back into our community. It's important to our businesses of the community, and it's important to other nonprofits, as the Kiwanis Club also shares with those as well. So, again, thank you so much, and I do look forward to just that continuing relationship with the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for being here today. Appreciate that. Anything else from the Council at this point on this topic?
Okay.
If not, thank you, John. We'll move on to item 3B.
Discussion on the 2020 Arizona League of Cities and Towns Resolutions.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Tyler Goodman from the City Manager's Office. And this is, I'm going to be presenting on the 2020 League Resolutions. That came out of the committees this summer. Just by way of background for those watching, or those who may not know, each summer, the League of Cities hosts five different resolution committees. They go through ideas and questions and concerns from cities and towns across the state, and they discuss those. And if they make it through that process, then they eventually come to the annual league conference, where they are voted on by a representative from each city and town. These, there's only four this year. In years past, you might remember, there were 12 or 15, so I'm grateful there's only four. I'm going to go through them, give a quick background, and then maybe one by one, ask for any questions or feedback from the Council. So, please stop me with any questions you have in the meantime. Let me shrink that. Okay. The first one is to support legislation requiring cities and towns to accept consular ID cards as a valid form of identification. And for a little bit of background, these cards are a form of personal identification issued by foreign governments to their citizens living abroad. This enables foreign nationals to secure items and services such as utility bank accounts, library cards, doctors, postal services, and in some cases, driver's licenses. To apply for a consular ID card, a Mexican national, for example, must present three types of documents to prove nationality, identity, and local address, and these include passport, birth certificate, or Mexican driver's license, among others. You should also know there was a bill going through the session this year. You should also know there was a bill going through the session this year, before it was cut short, that dealt with this, it was actually House Bill 2604, and this would have permitted the state to accept consular ID cards issued by foreign governments if biometric identity verification techniques were used in the issuance of the card, so retinal scans or fingerprints. So that was a bill that made it through the House. It was referred to the Senate, but didn't make it any further than that because the process was cut short. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and hear some feedback from you on this one.
Yeah, very good. Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tyler, for reviewing this. As a member of the Budget, Finance, and Economic Development Committee for the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, I reviewed this, and I spoke, I think, pretty precisely against this bill. I found it to be very poorly drafted, even though it was purported to be primarily used for Mexican nationals. The bill itself did not restrict this to the Mexican government, but really allowed any government that has a consulate to create an ID like this, and then be able to present it for identification, to open up bank accounts, open utility accounts, be used for law enforcement identification, and the claim that this had high-level biometric security, I found to be pretty specious in a way, because it did say that fingerprints would be acceptable as, as biometric security identification, and anybody who's ever worked with their hands for any period of time knows that sometimes their fingerprints can be damaged, altered, et cetera. So I wouldn't expect that our law enforcement or our bank officers are going to be able to determine the identity or validity of a Honduras consular ID card, a Guatemalan consular ID card. And there's been many states and municipalities that have had fraudulent IDs presented to be able to open up financial accounts, and even in California, be able to use it as a driver's license ID, and then have motor voter extension of voting status in very questionable circumstances there. And of course, this is a major issue across the country. So I found it to be unnecessary and subject to a real list of problems for our law enforcement and banking officials to be able to determine which is valid, which isn't valid, and create a lot of problems. So I would, I would not support this issue going forward. And that's my justification, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Good, and, and I sit on that committee with Councilman Good, and I guess my thought here is, you know, we have, you have student visas, you have work visas, you have these options for folks who are here, you know, temporarily. So we're kind of creating something that's not necessary in my mind, you, you have avenues for those people who are here temporarily through the visas, so I'm just not sure it's, it's something that is necessary or, or beneficial at this time. Councilmember Rusing?
Well, I'd just like to add that I support Councilman Good in his comments, and I would just like to also say that, you know, as a border state, we really need to make sure that our IDs have good photos on them. In my research, when I was looking up these Sid cards, that there was a problem with the photos on them being so bad that they really couldn't tell who was who, and now we're gonna, I guess they've promised they're gonna tune them up so that people can ID people through their photos, so, you know, people have passports, if they're here legitimately, they should have passports, and that's usually good enough, why add another layer to the confusion? Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I would agree, I would like to see us not support this resolution.
At this point, I, I think I've got some direction, since I'll be representing the council, unless there's somebody else have anything to say on this. Okay, I think we're good on that one, we can move into the next one, thanks Tyler.
What if I can go down? There we go. This next one is to support legislation that authorizes ordinances imposing a penalty, fine, forfeiture, or other punishment to be posted on the municipality's website and published in a paper of local circulation instead of being posted in three or more places. And I got some clarification on this one from the city of Goodyear, who is the one who's pushing this through. It's actually, they're trying to make it optional to post it in three public places, but mandatory that, that these ordinances are posted on the website and in the local paper, so it wouldn't be taking out any option, it would just make it an option to do all three, and definitely, sorry, to do one of the three, and definitely mandatory to post it on the website and in a paper. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
So they're really just making the requirement, in addition, put it on the website?
Correct.
Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusing?
So this would actually increase transparency?
That is the goal.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Silence is support in this case, yes? Okay. We'll move on to the next one.
Like the easy ones, this, this next one's along the similar veins, it's the city of Buckeye, I believe. It's to allow governing bodies to use any newspaper printed and published in their county for public notices required by state law if the newspaper has circulation within the city or town. And part of their justification is, at least in their case, there are situations where a city or town is forced to use a newspaper with significantly less circulation, which creates higher fees and less ability to publicize it to the audience that they're trying to target with the information. I don't think we have this issue here, but Buckeye does, and maybe some other cities and towns do, so it's made it this far.
Councilmember Rusing?
In the interest of transparency, I read the public notices daily in the, in the Courier, and my main concern is when they use any newspaper that's printed in the county or available in the county, it could include the Arizona Republic. So for example, if there's a notice about a cell tower, it would be very difficult for me to get a hold of the Arizona Republic, since I don't subscribe to it, and try to look at a notice in the Arizona Republic, whereas if it's in the local newspaper, it's a lot more convenient and make more sense. That's my main concern.
Other questions, comments from the council? So where do we stand with this, and we support this? What say you?
Boy, I don't know.
I'm sorry?
I share Councilmember Rusing's concern, you may have a small community that may have a small circulation daily or weekly or whatever. It might cost a little bit more, but just printed newspapers these days are, are difficult to acquire. Even our, our local newspaper is being published less frequently at a higher cost. So I would be concerned that maybe a small community might not be able to read those public notices, and sometimes they can be quite important. So I'm, I'm a little confused about why and what the consequences of allowing this to go forward, other than maybe saving a local community a little bit of money?
Yeah, it has the appearance, Councilman Good, as reducing transparency, right? Like if somebody's only, is, if you're only subscribed to just the small local paper, then you may not be made notice of what's, what's happening with your local.
Right, or if, if you can publish it in a broader circulation that you rarely subscribe to, like the Arizona Republic or something like that, many local people might not be aware of some of these issues that are required to be published, published.
Councilmember Rusing?
And, and I think it's important that we support our local newspapers, such as the Courier. They depend upon public notices to exist, make payroll, employ people, and I would feel that as a long-subscribing person that subscribes to the Courier since, I don't know, at least 34 years, I'd hate to see the Arizona Republic, you know, drive them out of business if we don't support them. Thank you. I, I grew up rural in areas where we didn't have a newspaper at all, so I really appreciate having the Courier.
Councilman Sishka?
Thanks, Mayor. It says printed and published. The Arizona Republic is not printed in the Alphabite County, is it? So it's almost, you know, it's almost a moot point.
Yeah, you're trying to figure, in our case, there really isn't, this doesn't necessarily apply to us specifically.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I will represent a no on this, unless I hear otherwise from the council here. Okay, let's go to number four.
Okay, the last one deals with establishing a state affordable housing tax credit. And I'll scroll down, they have quite a long background here, but the gist of it is incentivizing private sector builders to promote affordable housing developments. Remains an effective way to provide units for varied income households. The federal low-income housing tax credit is a dollar-for-dollar credit for affordable housing investments, providing over 2 million units since its inception. Like the federal tax credit, a state affordable housing tax credit would serve as an additional mechanism to encourage affordable housing development in Arizona. The impact of the federal tax credit is amplified when combined with a tax credit at the local level, maximizing both state and federal investments. So there is a federal one which is being utilized in the state, but the proposal is that the state also create a state tax credit, an affordable housing tax credit, to add on to that, to incentivize it further.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, our general plan certainly does support affordable housing, and I think this is one way to, to look at doing this. It also will help us economically in the form of construction TPT. I, I think this is something that I would like to see us support.
Okay. Other questions, comments from the council? Councilwoman Scholl?
Thanks, Mayor. I agree with Mayor Protem, or I think that's an area that particularly Prescott, we struggle with, you know, just a higher cost of living and, and needing more options for just professionals and all sorts of different backgrounds. Even, you know, here at the city, we have a lot of employees who have to live outside the city and come in every day, and teachers, and, you know, healthcare workers, and folks who work in restaurants, and I think it's just part of having a diverse, strong community is having diverse options for housing, and so I, I definitely support this initiative.
Councilman Good?
Well, I was very happy to see that our Congressman Paul Gosar was able to, after years of effort, be able to get the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development to remove the affirmative, furthering fair housing requirements that put so many federal strings on accepting some of these federal supports to the detriment of the local community. So I'm not, in, in general terms, opposed to, to such supports. It's really, really, really important to look at the details on these things. You know, we've got the Miller Valley development that's, I think, a pretty good, pretty good development over there, and it certainly is totally leased out before they even put a sign up. And that does help some of our lower-income working class being able to find a local place to live, and I think that one is maybe an example of one of the better projects. So I'm not against it generally. I think having this option for local municipalities to be able to look at might be helpful, as long as the, the details are closely examined and it doesn't negatively impact the community at large. So I, I would say generally, yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I think one of the things I really like about this, that it does incentivize the private builder, dollar-for-dollar tax credit. One of the things I would hope that we would not go to, or would not support, would be a federal, a housing authority. So this is something I think that is a, a step in the right direction that can really help with bringing in some affordable homes.
And I can add, Mayor, that obviously this is very general, what I can do is to keep track of this. If it's successful in getting a, a sponsor and language, I can certainly track it and make sure the council's okay with what it looks like.
Very good, thank you, Tyler. So I'm assuming we have a no, yes, no, I'm sorry, no, yes, no, yes, in that order. Is there any public comment, by the way, on any of these?
There's no public comment.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. So on the consent agenda, it suggests that we will be adopting, or approval, I should say, approval of the resolutions, since we're only approving, supporting two.
May want to pull it.
Pull it and then describe what we're doing? Okay, then we'll do that as well at the voting session. Anything else, Tyler?
That's it for me, thank you.
I don't think there's anything else here that we need to do at this point, this meeting is adjourned.